And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and they're also going to share with us a presentation on the Girls Go Forward.
Girls Go Forward is a group of 15 students from each middle school in the district that includes curriculum from the Girls Circle program, which promotes resiliency and healthy relationships in middle school girls.
The purpose is to encourage the development of strength, courage, confidence, honesty, and communication skills for all girls. Here's a video of some of the things we did.
Do we have any questions for them before we release them?
How often do you guys meet?
Um, we met.
Twice a week?
Yeah. Yeah, we met every Monday and Wednesday.
And is the program going next year too?
Yeah.
That's great.
I believe so.
Yeah.
The intention is that.
That's great. Thank you for sharing. That is amazing.
I'm only one member of the Women's Fund Board, but you've made the board proud.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you.
All right, great. And you're absolutely welcome to stay, but don't feel like you have to. Okay, so let's move on to Board and Administrative Reports. I don't have anything, so we'll go right into the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, the Superintendent's, by the way, girls, you're first on the Superintendent's good news for this week. So if you want to stay for that, you're first up. So first of all, congratulations to the Oshkosh Middle School Girls Go Forward Program participants who completed 5K run on Saturday, October 22nd. The beneficial program combines social, emotional curriculum with running. Thank you to all the community partners as well who made this program possible. So, thank you.
Yeah, nice job. Bye.
South Park Middle School students participated in Red Ribbon Week where they showed their commitment to being drug-free and healthy. Each day, students dressed to support the drug-free theme of the day, and to show their support, students decorated the halls, received Proud to be Drug-Free bracelets, and were encouraged to sign the Panther Pledge to be drug-free. South Park hosted a haunted house dance and open gym on October 25th with the help of students, and the help of the haunted house props were successfully created by, all the parts were filled, including mad scientists, zombies, ghouls, who helped make the haunted adventure even more spooky success. South Park staff competed against eighth-grade volleyball team to wrap up the season. Both staff and students enjoyed the fun fulfillment and competitiveness. They don't seem to list who won. The South Park students celebrated their first-quarter milestones following the Panther Way. The students who received no majors were able to choose as to what they would like to participate in from that list of open gym, music, karaoke, movie table, top games, marker space, or cooking. The students who received majors during that first quarter attended a lesson on empathy, and they were able to join the other students at the end of the incentive time. Oshkosh North Cross Country, it was the first time in North's history that the cross-country team qualified for state cross-country meet. Congratulations to them. Not only did adults have a chance to vote last week, but so did students and our youngest students, 4K students had a chance to vote on something really important, that was their first-ever mascot for the 4K program. The results of the election named the owl as the 4K mascot. Students at Roosevelt Elementary enjoyed Halloween parade and party, and they were able to wear their costumes and participate in contests like guessing the pumpkin's weight. Carl Trager Elementary welcomed over 60 veterans to their first annual Veterans Day program. Students learned about the history of Veterans Day, and they sang the National Anthem. Proud to be American to the veterans, Trager's own poppy princess read the poem Flanders' Fields while students recreated in the field with poppies, recreated the field with poppies from art class. And following the program, the veterans took part in an honor walk and enjoyed breakfast provided by Trager staff and community partners. Wonderful event. Roosevelt is proud to be one of the, one of the students, is the first prize in the fire safety poster. She was able to receive an exciting ride on a fire truck, and congratulations. Congratulations also to the OSD Special Olympics bowlers who recently competed at the state level, competed in Green Bay on November 13th. They did very well. Oaklawn and Valley Area Reading Recovery Consortium recently hosted a professional development opportunity for educators. Take a moment to click on the results when you have a chance of the contained, that are contained in the slide that will animate this experience, but the impact on students and parents as a result of the work of the reading consortium. And with our whole focus on literacy, it's important to be continuing our training. First-grade students at Jefferson Elementary School had been focusing on learning manners and social skills during their tea time with Mrs. Schmidt, which is held during the lunch hour. What a great way to practice good old-fashioned manners. Jefferson Elementary School invited family members who had served in the armed forces and other special guests to a reception and a veteran salute. Students and staff read poems and pieces about the meaning of Veterans Day, and taps were performed for the veterans. Oshkosh West Choir members sang the National Anthem, and taps were played by Eli from UWO. Two of the instructional support teachers who were part of obtaining a 15, I think there might be a zero missing, $15,000 grant for ASCD Teacher Grant, helped to create and publish two articles of the OSD Learning Without Limits Initiative. Take a moment to click also on this article to learn more about that grant. Congratulations to Oshkosh North students who were the very first to publish students from an online OSD e-Academy Creative Writing Course. Take a moment to click on the click on it and observe the students' work. To date, there have been 61 published poems by Oshkosh North students, but the students from all over the world submitting their work, it is an incredible honor to have their work published, and we continue to be very proud of our students and the work being published. And I believe a print version of that might be in front of Mr. Lysin's desk. Congratulations to Merrill students who were selected from hundreds of applicants from Northern Wisconsin and the Upper Peninsula of Michigan to be a part of 120 students who performed in the middle-level honors band at St. Normans College on November 5th. What a great honor and privilege. Second-grade students at Webster Stanley Elementary School hosted an insect fair. The students created an insect at home out of everyday items, and everyone enjoyed the students sharing their creations. Now, that is almost practice for lake-flying experience. Jacob Shapiro Brain-Based Instructional Charter School has a new name after votes were cast by many on Election Day. The new name is, of the Shapiro STEM Academy came out on top. Behind-the-scenes work to make changes will take place over the next several months. Shapiro students were part of the school assembly on November 7th. That included a dance, trivia questions, and about what the school is doing well in, and focused on areas of doing the right thing and even when no one is looking. Washington Elementary School students participated in a UNICEF trick-or-treat setting the goals of $300, but raising more than double that amount. The students learned how important their donations were to other children in the world, and how small things we take for granted each and every day are big things to kids from other countries who are struggling to drink clean, safe water, or eat healthy meals, or be immunized for fatal diseases. Communities One, students from Oshkosh North recently learned more about the Oshkosh community history through a scavenger hunt in downtown Oshkosh. The second part of the lesson was to select a landmark in Oshkosh and research it, and take all of the valuable information, write about it, take photos that would be entered into a Wisconsin Historical Society photo contest where eight student photos were selected as winners. Community students were visited by two local candidates who shared information with students about elections and the process and their perspective, which included what challenges they faced. They learned about marketing strategies, campaign finances, as well as the importance of being educated about the voting process and to consider, what to consider when making a candidate selection. They held their own school-wide mock election for several different positions and learned about the differences between popular vote and electoral vote. Congratulations to two Oshkosh North students who were part of the 180 students from 54 schools from Minnesota and Wisconsin who participated in the University of Wisconsin-Oklahoma High School Honors Band competition. And congratulations to Merrill Middle School Band Director Charles Bauer for being awarded a $125 grant from the Madison Jazz Society. The money will be used to increase the Jazz Ensemble Music Library. And congratulations to Oshkosh West Girls Golfers for being selected all-state. Great job to those students. And in the last two weeks or so, here is a list of activities that Superintendent's been a party to. And a very busy time of the year as we begin this past Monday with the first of the Holiday Concert Series. Well underway. That completes the report from the Superintendent this evening.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from committee chairs? Okay.
I have a report on the Policy and Governance Committee. We had met on November 9th. Seems like it was longer than that. Anyway, we had several agenda items related to Neola updates. One was on conservation of natural and material resources, which will be, have an opportunity to vote on tonight. Jim Fox had updated the committee on his request for changes to this policy, explaining the need to have a policy that is broad enough so that it doesn't need continual revision. There were some language additions and modifications that were approved by the committee. We also revisited the purchasing policy. You may remember that we had an opportunity to vote on that last month. It was part of a package of proposed policies. I had some reservations about the policy at that time, but voted to approve the package so that, with the caveat that we would come back and review this. One of the questions had come up relative to the increase in the dollar amount from $25,000 to $150,000, as to where that came from in terms of what would generate the RFP request, and that was a federal mandate that was also part of Neola's update. I had some additional questions regarding the monthly accounts for bills payable. I think it's important that we are more transparent and that we have a better idea of what we're voting on, particularly when we are looking at large dollar invoices, which I would define as something over five and six digits. So Sue Shnor is going to be looking into WASB, that is Wisconsin Association of School Board Policies, and other school districts as to how they handle those. Another Neola policy update dealt with course options. Julie Conrad explained that the updates made by Neola followed state statutes, and that our district not only meets the statute, but goes beyond when making provisions for opportunities for all students, including students eligible for free and reduced lunch. And that policy draft is also on tonight's agenda. Another policy where we had some questions on wording was the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship. And again, Julie Conrad provided a couple of changes to the policy to make sure the language was aligned throughout the policy. And we also asked for clarification on senior status. There was a paragraph that included a line relative to foreign exchange students, and we wanted to make it clear that while the time spent overseas as an exchange student counted toward the four semesters needed, it didn't require that you spend four semesters, excuse me, two semesters overseas. We also had a very interesting conversation about another Neola update on special meetings. We had some questions on that at a prior meeting of Policy and Governance. It went back to Neola, who said that the district should not go along with the changes that we had been given, and that they were recommending we not approve it at this time, so it doesn't appear on the agenda. We will be meeting again on December 15th at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Okay, the Education Committee met on Thursday, November 3rd. The meeting was called Order at 8:30. Dr. Brown talked to the committee about the elementary classroom minutes, or the teaching minutes of the school day. For several years, elementary teachers have had concerns about not having enough time with students to teach each day. Now let that settle in there. They want to teach longer, which I think is pretty amazing. Compared to other area districts, seven or more hours of daily instructional time at the elementary level where Oshkosh has six hours and 40 minutes. Kim will be exploring several options for teachers' hours, as well as where the minutes can be added, for instance, before today, after, or at both ends. The big key to this is going to be busing due to the timing of the student routes and the pickup times. The committee also discussed the found concerns or requests. Parents are currently complaining to board, some board members, about their child not having enough time to eat lunch by the time students get their food. And concern has been voiced about the amount of playtime during the school day. Request is made for best practices time for recess and lunchtime. Is it better to have one long break or to split out recesses throughout the day? There is concern about the school day adding time to the end of the day and not the beginning of the day. Seventy percent of students walk to school, which would be a huge adjustment. Concern was voiced on how it will be presented, and it was discussed that a breakdown be communicated to the community so everyone understands the breakdown. Then a suggestion is made to incorporate things to do in lunch, as for instance, like the tea time. That would be instructional so that time's not just for eating. Kim would like to communicate with teachers to receive their input on opportunities and concerns. Hope is to have changes made for next school year's schedule. The committee requested that the board be provided with talking points for when they have parents. Contact us. We will have ready answers. And the next meeting is going to be December 1st at 8:30.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, is there anybody here that would like to speak on a non-agenda-related item? Or an agenda-related item? Okay, seeing none. We'll right into Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material, and each item has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Does anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 5A, please.
Okay. Anything else? All righty. The board will consider approval of 1, minutes of October 26, 2016, regular board meeting. 2, minutes of October 26, 2016, executive session of regular board meeting. 3, minutes of November 2, 2016, regular board meeting. 4, bills payable. 6, changes to the 2016-17 budget. 7, updates to board policies. A, 5113.01, course options. B, 5451.01, Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship. And 8, 7460, conservation of natural and material resources.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Gershak?
Aye.
Gershak, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Resolution 5A, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the temporary appointments. Yeah, resignations, retirement, and salary schedule is filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Madam President, I'd ask that this one be pulled. As I've stated at previous meetings, I don't think we do enough to recognize impact, positive impact on our retirees at the time of their moving on to a new chapter in life. I had the opportunity in the '08-'09 school year to work with Christine Nicholson, the school secretary at Washington, for two months, and it was a very interesting time. It was the month of December, the Holiday Concert. Early school closing because we had a snow day one day early, starting the vacation, and students had to return, or chose to return to school because there were things they needed to pick up, they needed over the holidays. And I just wanted to thank Chris for her many years of service to the Oshkosh Area School District, particularly her service to the students and families at Washington Elementary School.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Gershak?
Aye.
Gershak, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, there's no individually considered resolutions, so request for future agenda items. Yes, Barb?
I want to thank administration for giving us a more comprehensive list, so we have some things to look forward to in the upcoming months. I mean that seriously. And also, there's one I'd like to add. In the month of December, it's been historically the agenda item that seeks to get board approval from all 422 Wisconsin school districts for the proposed resolutions that will go before the delegate assembly at the WASB. Those may seem, I don't want to say insignificant, but I want to tell you that as a member of that Policy and Resolutions Committee, at least 16 hours have gone into consideration of about 15 or 16 resolutions that will come before the delegate assembly in January. And there's good discussion among the 25 members of that group. Some very thoughtful conversation about meeting the needs of students in our state. So that needs to be added to the December agenda so that our delegate, namely Mr. Evans, knows how the board would like him to vote on those items.
And I trust that those resolutions will arrive by mail shortly.
They are to come soon, yes.
Right, that we'll distribute those to the board as soon as we receive them, and then place them on a future agenda.
There's one in particular that I think this board will find of great import, and that is one that would allow districts that had chosen to limit their expenditures compared to what the levy limit was over time, so that the fact that we spend so far less per student than other districts would have a chance to come closer to the state average than we currently are. So that particular item received a lot of attention last week at the Policy and Resolutions Committee.
For what it's worth, I think that'd be a good idea, too.
All right, well, I'll have a chance to vote next month.
And will be a miraculous, wonderful experience for Oshkosh and Oshkosh Area School District. If that got through the legislature, it would be wonderful.
I have another request that goes along with the request for future agenda items from our last meeting in an effort to kind of set the tone for the next, you know, our board work together, and something that Barb has been really good about keeping us on task. We have received the Key Work of School Boards book. She gave all of us a copy.
Oh, no, I didn't.
Just me, then?
I think.
I'm the only one that got one?
All right, so anyways, I've got the book, right? Sorry, I thought she gave us all one, just me. Anyways, there is a consultant that works with WASB and in that work with other school boards, and she works with school boards all over. And so I spoke with her and said, you know, if we were thinking about, you know, we're really stable now, but we want to keep the good work that we've done and keep that moving forward, how could we maybe work with you? And how can we stay focused on what's coming up? And she said, first step would be a survey, doing the survey that is free, so it's at no cost, and it's part of the Key Work of School Boards, and I think it's called School Perceptions. And then decide what we'd like to do with that survey. She can come and review that with us, and she can help us kind of set the tone and focus for the future. So I wanted to bring that up, and I'm thinking that we could then roll in. I told her we were really looking at, you know, some different focuses for the kinds of students that we'd like to be graduating from our schools. She said that could really kind of roll into that. So maybe a little bit more organized approach, kill two birds with one stone kind of thing.
In order to benefit all board members, we, I'm very familiar with Key Works, and we should order and make sure we have copies for every board member as well.
We should not be the only two that have.
Right, you should. Yes, Key Works, if board's working together, Key Works in the hands of every board member is essential. We'll get those for you.
I just happen to have the information, if you want that distributed tonight, on accessing that survey. You just go to a website. Each of us would have our own survey access number. And then they had suggested that you finish putting your information in by June 30th, but I think we would want that sooner than that. So the sooner we get it in, the more, you know, the faster it comes back. So if you'd like, I can distribute these.
Great, thank you so much.
Is that the survey?
You just go to a website, each of us had, would have our own survey access number. And then, they had suggested that you finish putting your information in by June 30th, but I think we would want that sooner than that. So, the sooner we get it in, the more, you know, the faster it comes back. So, if you'd like, I can distribute these.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Is that the survey they gave us at the last regional meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I took the survey once, but nothing ever happened after that.
We're not going to let that happen.
Well, we're supposed to get the data back.
Maybe it's just the beta wanted it in, need to correlate it.
All right, are there any other requests for future agenda?
Just great suggestion.
Oh, okay, great.
Sounds fantastic.
Okay, good, good, good. All right. All right, Nina, oh, sorry, announcements.
I attended the Legislative Advocacy Seminar sponsored by WASB last Saturday in Stevens Point, and we had an opportunity to hear from Todd Berry from the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance, and he happened to have some extra copies of one of his handouts, and so I'm sharing that. We also had a chance to hear from the DPI in terms of their growing concerns about the shortage of teachers, not only in Wisconsin, but throughout the Midwest. Roughly 50% less people are graduating from college and teacher ed than there were five years ago.
Fifty?
About 50%. And given the demographics, that the baby boomers, some of whom are still working, or those that are younger than the baby boomers who will be retiring, are in greater numbers than the number of people overall in the population. So, they're talking about such things as Future Teachers of America, and educators, rising educators, I think it's called, groups in the high school. I know UW-Oshkosh is looking at creating a CAP course, an introductory education course, to hopefully attract and interest more students in the field of education. So, we'll see what's going on. The governor, I know, had, they also alluded to the governor coming out with his education agenda. DPI is working on something else, and so we'll see where all this comes, comes to fruition.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry, to Executive Session for the purposes of considering the employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee. Oh, I'm sorry, I said adjourn. Sorry, okay, I'm going to keep going. Employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. 19.851C, Wisconsin Statutes. A, Consider Employment/Performance of a Public Employee. 2, Considering the Disciplinary Data of Specific Persons. 19.851F, Wisconsin Statutes. A, Review Expulsion/Recommendation from Expulsion Hearing Officer for a High School Student Who Engaged in Conduct Constituting Repeated Refusal or Neglect to Obey School Rules. 120.13CE, Wisconsin Statutes. C, Review Expulsion/Recommendation from Expulsion Hearing Officer for a High School Student Who Engaged in Conduct While Under the Supervision of a High School Authority, I'm sorry, of a School Authority, Which Endangered the Property, Health, or Safety of Others, Endangered the Property, Health, or Safety of any employee or school board member of the school district, In Which the pupil is Enrolled in Repeated Refusal or Neglect to Obey School Rules. 120.13CE, Wisconsin Statutes. And D, Review Expulsion/Recommendation from Expulsion Hearing Officer for a High School Student Who Engaged in Conduct While Under the Supervision of a School Authority Which Endangered the Property, Health, or Safety of Others in Repeated Refusal or Neglect to Obey School Rules. 120.13CE, Wisconsin Statutes.
To be legal, does that first motion adjourn need to be withdrawn, and then the proper one put in?
So I withdraw my motion?
Oh, so moved.
And second.
Call the roll.
Homstead?
Aye.
Homstead, aye. Marlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Gruzak?
Aye.
Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so we're adjourned.